So it looks like it's 7 o'clock. This is Andy Engel speaking. I'm the chairman of the Board of Finance. Apparently the only person who doesn't have a camera pointed at him right now, though. In any event, we call this meeting to order. Would like everyone to state their name for the record. So somebody start.
I'm an architect.
Paul Healy.
Patrick Roy.
Michael Glenn. I'm sorry.
Michael Glenn.
Go ahead. Michael Glenn and Hicks Park.
Barbara Henry, First Electman.
Kim Barron, Treasure and Finance Director.
Julie Katie, Secretary.
There's John. He's coming in.
There's John.
Hi, John.
Hi.
Hey, John.
How are you?
This is Andy here. Could you state your name for the record? We've opened the meeting.
John Hopkins.
Very good. So first order of business is to quickly take care of the minutes from the last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second. John Hopkins.
Is there any discussion? This is Andy again. Hearing no discussion, let's vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Then let's move into the main dish here.
Andy, can I just say one thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Just wanted to let everybody know that we are recording this because we have to by the law to make sure that we can post this on our website because we're doing this this way. The public did know that they could chime in because it was posted on the agenda, and I just wanted to say that for the record. And I also just wanted to let you know, in case if you didn't know, that Mark Lyon passed away this afternoon. He was a former First Electman in Washington. Good friend, good colleague.
Yeah, he was a good man. I'm sorry.
Anyway, I just wanted to tell you about the recording.
Thanks.
Is someone else coming in? Okay. Okay, so we had a number of questions for the architects. Thank you, gentlemen, for taking the time to be with us this evening. This is Andy again. And I'd like to open this up to questions from members of the Board of Finance for the architects specifically. So please, go ahead.
We're listening.
Okay, I guess I'll start. It's Patrick Roy. I guess, you know, we were looking at this, you know, just from the overwhelming expense of everything and how we can, you know, make this more affordable possible. And I was just wondering, between the propane and the existing oil that's heated the roof before
The operation up to now for propane is more economical than fuel oil, but that's probably changed within the last month.
Okay.
Question for our mechanical engineer. He could update us on that if you want to get that updated.
In terms of, in terms of initial cost, though, since you have an existing oil burning system, the least expensive option would be to continue with an oil burning system, at least in terms of initial cost.
Okay. So that could reduce the expense if necessary?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
I did, I don't know if you saw, in the last email that I sent out with answering a few questions, I did go ahead and get an official estimate from Good Hill. So it's just one estimate, but I believe, I don't have it in front of me now, but I believe it was like 10,000-ish to go to another, to a new oil burning furnace. It was around 14,000 to do.
Teresa, I have, this is Andy, I have that estimate in front of me.
Okay.
The, the new oil furnace would be 10,640.
Okay.
And there are two propane furnaces teamed together would be 14,920.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, you're reasonably close. You're in the ballpark.
I did, I did have one other question on that. Does, because I'm not sure that it's separated, but is that asbestos in the original, the asbestos removal, that's the entire 29,000 for that fee, or that, did that include any of furnace fees or anything included? And then on the oil to propane estimates from Good Hill, is that the buried tank, or is that still an additional $10,000?
The buried tank is separate. So that would, the estimate from Good Hill is just to do the furnace. They did say they would not have to, they could avoid any of the asbestos on the duct work.
Okay.
Could replace it without getting into the asbestos, according to them. And, yeah, so.
Thank you. So that whole 29,000, just for clarification, that whole 29,000 is being removed?
If we, if we don't do any of the asbestos work.
Awesome.
Okay.
Andy, I'm just going to let you know that Nanette is on also. Hi, Nanette.
Yes, I saw that.
Hi, Nanette.
Hi, Paul. Hi, Barbara. Hi.
Hi, Nanette.
Hi, Andy.
Hi, I'm one of the few people with no photos. Can you just state your name for the record, so they have it?
Nanette Falkenberg.
Thank you. So with the oil furnace, then, we could, if we just replace that, we're looking at, you know, just shy of 11,000, which is a significant savings. Okay. One of the things I noticed, I was over there with Teresa yesterday, and the north section of the library has a dirt floor crawl space, and that is also the section that has the mold issue in the attic. And in my experience as a builder and sort of a semi-professional student of building science, I know that there, those two are linked. Moldy or wet crawl spaces are almost always the culprit, or wet foundation are almost always the culprit when you have mold in the attic. And I wonder why that wasn't addressed in the information that we saw earlier. I think that would be a relatively simple fix.
May I disagree with you?
You can, but you'll be wrong.
Actually, the source of the mold in the attic is, is due to the fact that it was air-conditioned, and it wasn't properly insulated when it was originally done. So condensation, condensation formed within the insulated space when the space was air-conditioned. That's actually the culprit.
Okay, so explain to me where you think, where the mold was?
The mold is, is forming on the surface of the drywall, presumably, because when the space is air-conditioned, the dew point of the moisture in the insulation is, is reached. So.
But doesn't air conditioning also dehumidify?
Well, let me comment on that. There is a separate item for dehumidifier for the basement crawl space. I believe it was at $5,000.
Okay.
And so there were two separate items. You know, the, the other problem is the perimeter drainage of the building, and that's making the basement moist, because the water is collecting around the perimeter of the basement, and it's a big contributor, we think.
Okay, let's move on from that. Other questions, then?
Has anybody provided a real priority list? I mean, I'm still not clear on what needs to be, like, what are the most urgent issues?
That's the most critical part of our report, and everything is divided into priorities, necessary versus optional, and it's embedded in the report.
Okay, my apologies. I must not have printed that out.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I worry about looking at just sections of a report because it's all tied together. The meaning and the consequences are built up through the report. So I encourage you to read the whole thing.
Okay. Does everybody have it?
I don't. We do not, the Board of, yeah, the Board of Finance did not get that. It was the abridged version, because I guess the original one was 400,000. So I believe that's the one you're referencing. So we only saw the $130,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did email the report to everybody a few months ago. I can send it to everyone right now if you want.
If you don't mind, I apologize. Thought we were living life, you know?
It costs you a few thousand.
Okay, one person speak at a time, please.
Sorry, the report costs you a good deal of money, and it's, it's worth reading. For that reason, if not anything else.
This is Thea. I just wanted to point out that Teresa offered to give each of you a printed and bound copy, and we were told that, you know, you'd rather have the digital version. So that's what was supplied, but one copy was given to Andy.
It's easier to absorb, for us older folks, in a printed-out copy. It's very difficult to absorb information of this granular sort on a computer screen, in my opinion.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to kill a few trees and use a lot of ink, so looking forward to printing it.
Okay. It's only, it's only about 60 some odd pages or 80 pages.
Oh, that's fine.
You know, since we're all on the phone right now, why don't you give us a synopsis and tell us, number one, two, and three, what are the first three things we have to do to stabilize the building?
Well, the building is stable. You know, it's a very well-built building. You put a new roof on it. It's got moisture problems. The moisture problems were particularly resulting in cost for the archives being in the attic. So the revised program took the archives off-site. So, and so taking the archives off-site also meant the attic is basically mothballed. The moisture problems are fixed, but you don't use it. The, so there are programmatic issues, and there are usage issues, which we kind of try to confront in the report. But it's, it's, some of it is just simple maintenance, like, there has junky storm windows on the windows that are trapping moisture and heat and ruining those good windows that should be removed. So there's interior storms that we specified. And also, the heating system was inefficient. The moisture around the building from site, from the site draining improperly is a very big issue. And it's my preference, and I won't speak for Hicks, he has maybe different slant on it, but I think the, the water coming off the roof and putting gutters, replacing the gutters that are there, which are damaged and too old, I, I think it would be better, although it's a little more expensive, to let the water run into gravel perimeter and have French drainage. What we don't know is where the water table is that we can put dry wells to take that water. That would apply to maintaining gutters also. So the building is kind of in a sinkhole, and the long-term health of the building, I think, would be much better if that was addressed.
Isn't there a creek next to it?
Yeah. It's literally a floodplain.
Right.
It's all wetland soils.
So, you know, of course, there, there hazardous materials issues, which you guys are well aware of, the asbestos, and there is an uncertain nature of the extent of oil leakage that occurred, I guess, when the original tank was replaced some 20 years ago. So, you know, potentially, those are issues.
The well?
Yep, and providing whether you want potable water for the bathroom upstairs. If you do, then you'd need to provide a, a new well, because the existing well has been contaminated.
And there's the handicap code, which might be relevant if you're trying to get more grants, state grants, wants to address those issues.
Might I bring up a, can I just bring up a point? This is Patrick from the Board of Finance. If, if the gutters were, if the gutters were done and the drainage was corrected, wouldn't that ultimately solve the basement moisture problem?
No, I don't think it would, because it's not only the water running off the roof, it's the groundwater.
Okay.
Needs to get deposited somewhere else in a continuous basis.
I have a question for, actually for Barbara. We had a meeting at the Hodge a few months ago about the drainage in that area. Do you know, is there any update on that? Because that, that probably would affect anything that we do over there.
No, because we were with the state, and they are, you know, they're not, they're not doing anything right now. And they were going to, they were showing where the water went from the basins that were installed there, basically in the property. And that, that water is supposed to be running over to the stream, but it is just a very, very wet area by itself, without any water coming in from the street, from the road.
That's correct.
BOT is not going to be doing anything. I mean, you look at the Christmas tree we lost there because of the water table. It's always a swamp.
Yeah. No, I'm on the, I'm on the wetlands commission. This is Andy. And, you know, I know that those are on the soil map as wetland soils. And if you look at the floodplain map, I'm not quite sure if the Hodge is in the floodplain, but if it's not, it's not more than 100 feet out of it. It's a very wet area. And that's just, there's nowhere to drain the water to, is the problem.
Well, we could explore doing dry wells. We could basically look into that, because depositing the roof water, just the roof water, is making problems.
Are there any sort of sump pump solutions?
Well, it's not a, it's not an interior problem. It's with the, in other words, the crawl space is not flooded. It's just damp.
But if you had a pump?
Well, I suppose you could spend a lot of money and put a pump underground outside, wire it and all that, and keep the water going. But I think the thing to do is to mitigate the water. And they're going to get rid of it, but if you've got sitting water against, in soil, against the foundation, constantly going to be damp. If you've got crushed stone, it's going to have a cycle of damp, but it might substantially mitigate the dampness from the crawl space.
That's true.
Can I just say something? It's Barbara Henry. Because the Catholic Church down the road, it's got the same problem, and the basement is always wet. They do have a sump pump, and we finally spent money to put the gravel, the, replace the, what do you call those pipes? Around it? Yes. And then, and, and put the gravel and try and get the water away from the building. But we do have a sump pump in there. It's just something that, it's unusable space, and it is what it is.
Fortunately, the building does not have a basement. If it had a basement, your problems would be more serious. It only has about a three-foot-high crawl space.
There's a reason they didn't put a basement in that building.
It doesn't have a basement either. It's got a pretty, maybe a four-foot crawl space. There's nothing in it.
And just in regards to the basement or the crawl space, in the report, the recommendation was to do that dehumidifier there, which I suppose would be enough to, to, to bury out the building a little bit, which would be good.
I think it would make a difference, yeah.
I assume that also means closing off the vent from the outside. There is a vent on the back of the building.
Yeah, that can be easily, but the other thing is, the access to the crawl space is water-limited, and you have an item at the floor central that maybe it's desirable to put a larger, larger opening for people to get into the crawl space from the outdoors.
It's Barbara again. I just want to comment, because I'm just thinking of all the, we do have a dehumidifier that runs in the old little brick museum. So, I mean, this whole area is a swamp. And that is why also, the, and so anyway, getting back to that point, we have a dehumidifier that runs out of that museum to keep the water from, and that does not have a basement either, but just to keep the, you know, it kind of dry. And the reason why the Board of Finance actually voted down having a basement at the senior center when it was raised was because of the water issues. So that has a partial basement, very, very small, towards the back, but the rest of it is a crawl space. It's just a wet area. It's not just that building, the Hodge.
Clearly. And I, I think the dehumidifier might be a priority over the new furnace,
Well, the furnace, it just isn't broken now, so.
It's broken?
We're nearing.
We're not, we're not, it's busted, okay.
It's mustered and can't be repaired, right?
It can be repaired, but it was broken, it broke earlier in the fall, and we spent, I can't remember now, a good chunk of money getting it fixed. You know, it's, it's, it's on its last legs, and it needs, I think it's like the box inside. The furnace is cracked.
Oh, the heat exchanger.
Yeah, so it needs a lot more work. And at that point, I think, if we had replaced it a few years ago, we probably, you know, we've, we've paid for it already at that point. Not much money put into it.
Michael, would it be helpful if we recapped what we felt were the priorities for the group?
I think so.
All right, so I think priority one is, is, is removing the mildew in the attic space, which involves demolition and spraying the space with mildewicide. Number two is removing the outside storm windows, which are damaging the original wood windows. Number three, number three is installing new gutters as part of an overall drainage plan to remove excess water from the immediate vicinity of the building perimeter. And then, what, dehumidifying the basement with the crawl space?
Yes.
And what about, what about a touch-up, touch-up paint where required? That seems like that should happen.
Well, in conjunction with removing the crummy old, limited, storm windows, that item in our report is the conservation of the windows, repair and conservation. They were taking all the windows out and on a bench and reworking them, getting them tight, repairing damage, and all of that, I think, was like, it was a, I have, I don't have it in front of me, but it was a substantial sum. But all of these numbers are subject to nitty-gritty talking to the contractor or general contractor or specific person who's going to do it and getting actual prices. And we, our prices are high because we're cautious, and we've got overhead and profit in there for a general contractor. So if you filter out the exigencies and what you want to do, it would be very helpful to make, to choose those, and then go to a general contractor or series of people, get numbers, and negotiate perhaps. We're certainly going to be in a good position to negotiate in the coming six months. Everything's very good.
So this is Paul Healy. I'm a little surprised that in the five points you've just enumerated, that a new furnace isn't in there.
Oh, it is. I mean, we're, it's, all of this is in the report. What is necessary?
No, I understand, but what Hicks just told us was.
Well, yeah, no, the furnace, the furnace would be assumed, because it's not currently operational. But yeah, obviously, I would say the furnace would be number one.
All right.
When we wrote the report, the furnace was operational.
Got it. Okay.
The number for the, by the way, Michael, the, the total number for window repair?
Yeah, I can get it.
UV, UV protection, interior storm windows, repairing shutters, and reinstalling, everything was about 19,450.
That's the number I remember, but I didn't want to say that without finding it.
Yeah.
It's about 19, yeah.
And do you know what the historic district feels about that?
I would think they'd be delighted, because it's conserving the, the windows, and it's the most important thing from the standpoint of historic preservation, restoring, preserving the windows, which are, cannot be replaced.
You're not, you're not removing, those are original windows in there? You're not removing?
We're, we're making sure they're there for another several years, you know? We're conserving them.
I'm not going to.
It's just the storm windows.
Historic District Commission, though.
Okay.
There was a comment about storm windows? I'm sorry?
I think the windows that you're talking about are removing the existing storm windows, leaving the original wood windows in place, and having new interior storms made that really wouldn't be visible from the street. They, from the street, they'd just be another layer of glass. Am I correct?
That's right. Existing, the existing wood windows would be removed and repaired, and then, and then repainted in a shop setting, and then reinstalled.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Glenn and Mr. Stone. You've given us six items. You've given us, I think we have a number of 19,450 on the storm windows. The furnace was, how much, Teresa?
About, it was, what, 10,400 for the oil, and it was 14,000 something for the two propane. But that does not include, you know, with the propane, that doesn't include the new tank and the new piping and all that.
So the oil tank needs to be replaced? It's defective?
No, the oil tank's okay, I think.
It's fine, okay.
Yeah, if you replace the oil tank, then you open up a potential Pandora's Box about contaminated soil abate.
Right, right.
We did all of that in 2000. We pulled all the tanks, we did all the remediation. So although, that's 20 years ago. I can't remember how fast it goes.
Right.
I have to look and see. Kim, do you remember how, what, how long the guarantee was on that tank we put in? I don't remember. I don't.
I don't. We replaced all the tanks in town. And Russ D'Aranto did all of the soil.
Right, okay.
Russ advised us on the, on the tank in this part of the project.
Okay.
And we have a list of the people who we consulted with and got estimates and costs
from, that in the report, it'd be useful for you to talk to those people, because they're interested in getting the work.
Okay.
Can I, I'm, I'm trying to get through the six items and put numbers next to them and get to a total.
Yeah, sure.
So we have, the four open items are mildew, new gutters, the touch-up paint, and the basement, dehumidifying the basement, yeah.
And outside storms.
I think outs, the storms are included in the 19,450.
Sorry.
If I could just run through the list that we have in our, in our report, and let's, let's just see. So we have an estimate of gutter and leader removal.
Could you tell us what page you're on in the report?
It's page 41. It's page forty one.
Thank you.
It's likely costs, likely construction costs revised program.
Thank you.
Under the site. And estimate of gutter and leader removal, new gutters and leaders, and dry wells to accommodate the roof drainage. And these were all estimates. It is sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, we're up to forty six thousand five hundred.
Okay. Now.
Let me just interject. There is some masonry repointing to be done. And there is erosion of the, the masonry joints at grade and probably a little below grade. So that needs to be addressed also.
Okay, seven.
We had an estimate of masonry repair and above grade repointing of thirty six hundred dollars.
Great.
Okay.
Up to fifty grand.
Okay. Let's see what else we have here. So no asbestos is part of the game plan. Is that, is that correct?
I think.
Currently, yeah, correct.
Attic demolition and treatment with mildewicide, we have a number of eight thousand dollars.
That was eight thousand?
Eight thousand.
Thank you.
And what else was in the critical list that we haven't covered? Well, we don't have, we don't have water yet.
Dehumidifying the basement.
That's five K.
No, the, the water, the well itself.
The well was eight thousand?
Yeah. That's, that's from Grella.
Yes.
And then there's another fifteen hundred dollars to excavate, excavate the piping to connect it to the building and remove the existing contaminated well.
That was how much? I'm sorry.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
One five zero zero.
Thank you.
Yep. And crawl space dehumidicate, dehumidification was five thousand dollars.
Good.
We had that in the fifty.
Yeah, well, we'll total it all up at the end and see if my numbers work.
Okay.
If I, I was doing that in my head. That's never a good idea. Touch up paint was the only other thing.
Well, if you do, there's very little touch up paint. There's some soffits and doors.
You call that two thousand?
Well, we have an overall number for painting was inside and inside. And that was ten grand.
But, but that's mostly interior.
Okay. Is, can we call it three thousand dollars for?
Yeah, I would, I would think that would be more than adequate.
Okay.
Also, your alarm system, smoke detector system, which our engineer says is adequate and should be replaced. It was four thousand, four thousand dollars.
Thank you.
If I can, just as an aside, so this whole project, as, as I think we all know, is part of a state historic preservation grant. And the second part of this process, if we were to do the whole shebang, and that includes making everything ADA accessible, there are matching grants for that. Based on some preliminary research, there are, there could be some other grants that we can apply for, for some of this work. We know of one that does exterior work only, that we can apply for. Again, it's matching. So, you know, there's, there are some opportunities out there that we can apply for to see if we can get part of this funded. So like the, the one I'm thinking of would be for just the exterior. So possibly the windows, probably the gutters and the masonry work could possibly get a matching grant if we're lucky.
Well, just, just so we have some general idea of what we're talking about in terms of numbers, those eight items down to the alarm, I'll read them off of furnace at ten thousand four hundred, mildew at eight thousand, storm windows and nineteen four fifty, new gutters, dry wells, sixteen thousand five, drainage for the base, excuse me, dehumidification of the basement, five thousand dollars, touch up paint, three thousand, thirty five hundred for, I don't know what the hell that was. The well, the well is eight, eight thousand fifteen hundred for the piping, alarm is four thousand. The total of those eight items is seventy nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. That's what we're talking about.
Did you say that again, John, please?
The last number is seventy nine, the, the total number for those eight items is seventy nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Some of which, Teresa, we may get back from grants.
Hopefully, we'll try.
But it does it, Teresa, does it have to be ADA accessible for those grants?
The one that, the one that I'm thinking of, it's the only one we've found so far. I think it's the seventeen seventy six foundation. They do exterior only for historic buildings. So it would not be, I think, for, I don't think the dehumidifier, probably not the well, the furnace, those kinds of things wouldn't apply. But possibly the windows, definitely the masonry work and the gutters.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, are there any other questions for the architects? I don't want to take up their entire evening.
Thank you. It was great to have you.
I just want to, I want to say again, please read the report because I think it's a lot of report that you could have on the shelf for a few years and, and manage the building with it. That was our invention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night.
And I, I did reemail the report to everybody and I, if you want me to print it out at the library with our brand new copy machine, let me know and I'm happy to print it out for you in your, drop it in the mail or drop it in your mailbox.
Right, I've already sent it to the printer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Teresa, could you, this is Kim Barron, can you just email me a copy, please?
Sure. Does anybody else need it?
And, and if you read it and you have questions, call us. We're, we're available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Ed. I was just wondering what, what you folks were thinking of using for the gutters. There's several types.
Um, I think that would be up to, we'd ask Michael and Hicks for their input on that.
Zinc coated.
There you go.
I love it. Thank you.
I'm going to email that to Kim right now. So I'm going to put myself on mute so you don't hear my.
You have a real price on that. You have an actual estimate.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah, hi, hi.
So what, what further action do we want to take tonight on this? Do we want to have a broader philosophical discussion on what our overall hope for the Hodge Library is going forward? It seems to me that's, we're making an assumption that we're going to continue using it as we're currently using it. And I don't know if that's a good assumption or not.
I'm still with you if you want our ideas, if you have a question regarding that.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
To chime in on that, we, in the whole, this whole process, so we started this, the process of applying for this grant for this big report, I guess about a year ago. So in this whole time, we've, we've, we have been discussing possible uses for the Hodge, different ways it could be used in the town. There's been a lot of ideas from like a writer's residency to, you know, at one point it was rented out to the land trust. So as a, as an office building that could be rented out, a lot of the things we were thinking of, other than what we're currently doing, would really require us to do a lot of work and that ADA, all that stuff, which, you know, leads to all the asbestos and everything else. So at, kind of at the end of this, we, we decided just like, well, for, you know, for now, it would be nice to have everything done. And then your options are open and you can do whatever you want with the building down the line. But we were trying to think, you know, it's a big number and what do we do?
If you, if you converted it to a writer's residency program, you wouldn't need the ADA apparatus.
Okay. Yeah. It would involve some other things like maybe a kitchen or some other.
Some other things. I, I just, my usual speech is to preserve a building, it needs to be used. To spend money on a building, it needs to be used. So I see this building as a, we, both Hicks and I, a bit of an orphan. And I think it really needs some deep thinking of how to maintain this building and enjoy its asset and have, have a new use for it. And I know in Mystic, in Stony, Connecticut, they have a writer's residency program. And I could put you in touch with those people who might have all kinds of ideas of how you could do it. Of course, it takes money, but Rocksperry has such a history of artists and writers that it might be an attractive option for X to explore.
Has anybody from the library board had, have you had robust discussions on raising monies outside of looking to the taxpayers?
Yeah, do you want to speak to that or?
Sure. In the matter of the Hodge, we have not done because we are initially responsible for raising money toward the minor operating. And as you know, we, we do that on a continual basis and on an advanced basis.
Right.
But no, we have not considered how we would raise additional money for the Hodge. So what we've been trying to do, which I think is what Teresa was, was, well, hinting that, walk the line between the building that was essentially left behind twenty five years ago when the town decided to move because we couldn't obviously, it was swamp, build a library that was adequate to the town's needs, then focused on the new library.
Right. Well, I'd be very happy to engage with any of you and talk about, you know, ideas. I mean, I've done tons of capital raising my whole life. So, I mean, there might be some angles that I could be helpful in, in, in the Board of Finance.
That'd be great.
Of course. Hicks and I would love to participate in that. I don't know what we could contribute, but we try.
Well, this, this town and the, our, our citizenry, they, they care about the, and they care about the Hodge. And if they only understood what the needs were, you know, it kind of reminds me of what you used to see in rural America where they would have a thermometer in front of the firehouse and line would go up. I mean, there might be folks, and even corporations, who knows, that would be, who knows? Maybe somebody would be saying, you know what? I'll buy the furnace. I'll pay for that. You just never know until you ask.
The question is always going to be, are you using the building? Is it being used to its full capacity?
Well, that's how you sell it. And you know, figure that out.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So, so I guess my question to Teresa is, when do you think you might have a plan for other uses for the library? Are, are these things going on in parallel or, because I, I, I agree that the fundraising will be stronger if we could present a clear plan for how the library is going to be used.
Well, I guess it just, it really depends on how ambitious we want to be. I mean, we wanted to do the whole, the whole ADA, everything to fix the building, which, you know, would be the world. We'd have to have, we'd have to dedicate a lot of time and energy to getting those funds raised because it's a big, it's a big chunk of money. I mean, it's, you know, basically our annual, our annual operating income for the library for the whole year. So.
I guess then the issue may, might be that for you and the library board to decide how you want to use it, whether you want to have uses for it that do need to include the ADA, because I, because I'm very sensitive to the, to the question of doing this, really knowing, knowing that the library is going to be put to a good purpose. And it seems like right now it's, it's being used. I know you're using it more than you used to, but it's not being used extensively at this point. So.
And, and part of that is because of some of the restrictions, like the lack of water and that kind of thing. So we don't, you know, we, we do technically, we have a policy in place to rent out the building for, for events, but I haven't, when people have inquired about it, I've said no, because I don't feel comfortable having people in there, you know, with, with sludge coming, coming out of the mountain. So.
So, this is Andy. I'd kind of like to move this forward in light, or in the context of the twenty 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 twan, twenty one budget. I don't think that we're going to, this is my opinion, I'm not speaking for the board. I don't think that we should be looking at approving a big expenditure of money at this point because I don't think that there is a clear plan for the usage of the library, of the Hodge. I don't think that there is a clear plan, without that plan, there isn't a clear plan for fundraising because we don't know what the eventual needs are going to be. I think that with the budget vote coming up very soon, that we need to decide what needs to be done, if anything, this year to preserve the building and to prevent things from decaying further. What does everyone think of that?
I will say, so in, in kind of breaking out some of these other things, that's, that's what we had in mind, you know, in all of our discussions over the past year over what, what the building could be used, we're trying to think, well, what does the town have a need for? And that's going to take a lot of exploration. And it might be something that we include, we're working on our next strategic plan for the library, and that might be something that we include in there, you know, a long, a long range plan for the Hodge. So in the capital requests that we sent and then in talking with Michael and Hicks just now, you know, we're trying to narrow it down to things. And the way that we use the building now, which is significantly more than it was being used in the last few years, what's going to make the building, you know, safe for the people that are in there and what's going to stop it from, you know, deteriorating further?
So, very good. Thank you, Teresa. At this point, can I hear from members of the Board of Finance what their views are on what parts of this or we should go ahead with all of this? What are your views?
Well, this is Paul. I, I think that to, you know, without a real strategic plan, I think preservation and halting further deterioration is critical. So is it the full seventy nine?
So, is it the full 79,000? I'd have to think about that more, but, you know, and are we prepared to step up for that full amount without a clear program of independent philanthropy from, you know, individuals in our community? And I think that there will be support for that, I really do, but it needs to be laid out and clearly articulated, and the library board is going to have to figure out, okay, how can we maximize the use of this asset? And it's an asset, historic, very important to our town.
I'm going to sign off.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Stay in touch if you have questions. Call us, I don't run a meter on the phone, so don't worry about my time, okay?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Good night.
Night.
This is Barbara. Can I just, there are restrictions on what you can do with this building still, are there not? From the will and then what the state said? So there's just so much that you can do, or is that not the case anymore?
We did, we did move away from some of those restrictions when the town attorney gave permission to rent to the land trust.
Right.
So we're allowed to rent it out. I believe that unlike other town assets, we're not allowed to sell it. I don't know if we're allowed to give it away, but I don't think so. I think per the will, it has to be there, it has to be run as some sort of library.
Library or museum of some sort.
Yeah. But it does say library.
Right.
Will.
Well, I know that the, you know, in the plan of conservation and development, one of the things that came up, and I mean, this is zoning, historic district, what the, what that building can be used for or not, people were looking for, you know, the office space place that they could rent and use, sharing, sharing a space to do, hold a meeting, have a, you know, an address or whatever. And I don't know if those are things, because anything bigger, there's always a parking issue there.
You bet. Yeah, that's a big drawback.
But I think that, you know, there were, there was a lot of interest in that, and I think that, in having a building in town that was designated for that type of use, where people could use it to have, like I said, a conference, or not a conference, you know, a conference meeting, or just to rent it on an offer, I'm drawing a blank, but if that was, if that was put out there as a possibility and it was allowed, people would give money. I think people will give money if they know, what is it for? What is the use of the building? Not just to restore it.
I agree, and I think that's something to consider in the year going forward. What I'm really interested, this is Andy speaking, what I'm really interested in right now is what we can do right now for this budget. And again, what are, what are people's thoughts on that?
Well, Andy, it's Patrick, I just want to kind of chime in if possible, because I agree with your point, and Barbara's as well, without a, without a clear direction. Maybe this, you know, 79,000 to 80,000 that we're talking about, you know, if, can we, can we space that out over two years? You know, start with the furnace and some things, and then, you know, maybe do the gutters, and then next year, do the windows. You know, if we do that, then it would space it out, it'd be a less of a financial burden on the town as well, and we can continue to preserve it, but over, you know, a longer span. What do you guys think?
That makes sense.
I think that's, yeah. And another point...
Half this year, half next year, and then we lay out the purpose and more things going forward.
We just have to decide what the priorities are, or someone does.
And to see what grants come up there.
Making excellent points, that I agree with. Andy, I saw in one of the emails that you had requested to take a look inside the library. Did you say you were able to do that at this point?
Yeah, I did, and I strongly disagree with the architect about the source of, you know, the cause of the moisture in there. You know, air conditioning does not cause mildew, does not cause mold growth. Air conditioning dehumidifies air.
I agree, Andy. Yep, that's, I didn't want to argue that either.
No, I walked away from it. But dehumidifying that crawl space, getting a layer of plastic down on the ground, and getting some dehumidification, dehumidification in there would be cheap and it would make a difference.
So, Andy, in terms of next steps, I guess I would go back to Paul's question. If, it sounds like there's agreement that what we would like to do now is to take steps to make sure that the problems don't get any worse.
Exactly.
And so, it seems to me, and, you know, Paul raised the question, is that everything, is that the total that John came to, is that less? I think that's, for me, that's what we should focus on for the budget going, for the budget we're considering now.
Yes, exactly so.
And Patrick, what we need to figure out, if it's, call it 80 grand, what can we phase in on year one, year two?
Well, that's what I was thinking, like even, and Theresa, Cindy, please feel free to chime in, you know, are the storm windows, the windows and taking them all out, I mean, that's a $19,000 thing, that's, you know, a substantial part of this budget. Is that a want-to-do or a need-to-do?
From my understanding, that's a, that's a need-to-do.
Even for another year?
But, I mean, I think it could probably, I mean, it's waited probably 25 years, it could probably wait another year. And I will say that some of those exterior things, those are the things we might be able to get a grant for. So...
That might give us some time also.
Yeah, prioritizing, I would think, some of the interior work, like the furnace, the well, and the dehumidification in the base, in the crawl space, and then we can save maybe some of the exterior stuff to see if we can get that grant.
Right. And in the interim, to the extent that the library board should come up with a plan, there's no reason why you start going to private individuals to raise money.
I mean, Paul could come up with six different great ways to market that. I know he can. Like, something about the furnace. Heat, furnace, I don't know. But the line there, you know, on the furnace.
On the furnace, I'm serious. Those people, people are into that.
I agree.
So, Barbara, can I?
I'm sorry, Andy.
Mark you down for that, Paul.
No. I just wanted to ask a question about, right, well, we could do that. I wanted to ask a question about, assuming, you know, we come up with a number, I don't know what it is, but we're looking for, so we've got a budget number for this upcoming year. Say that we get, or say the library gets a donation of $11,000 to cover the new furnace. Can they just go ahead and spend that money and get the new furnace in, or does that create a budgetary issue? Because we've given, you know, because this is, has become a capital project. Does that have to go in next year's budget? I don't know the answer to that. Maybe Barbara or Kim does, or maybe I'm not expressing the question well.
I'm not sure. I, if it's in the budget for July 2021, and the budget is approved, it's an approved project, and yes, they can move on.
Right.
But if you raise money independently, how does that affect the budget? Let's say...
Yes, that's the question.
Non-taxpayer money comes in. Do they still keep that budget money and accelerate what they would have spent then in year two?
You know what? The Board of Finance could change the description of what it's going to be used for, or move it, you would have to go and get approved, obviously, as a new project, it would have a line, because we have moved money with trucks before.
Right.
Where we budgeted for a truck for some purpose, and then it, maybe we got a new truck instead, but we could use that money on a different truck. Right, Kim?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
You can move it to another item, but it would have to be approved as a new project.
So, it seems to me, we should structure this in a way that raising money is an incentive, not a disincentive. So, I think, I think it's structured, Andy, in a way that they're not basically giving up the money, but that we could transfer it to another use.
Right, no, I don't want them, if we, if we say we're giving them $20,000, or, you know, that's a number I'm picking out of my head.
Right.
And they got a donation of $20,000, I wouldn't want to rescind the 20,000 we had provided.
Right.
I'm not saying that at all.
Right.
You know, but what, one thing I do have learned from talking to people in the land trust, and there are probably other people on the board who can echo this, is that if you do the project and then do the fundraising, you don't get the fundraising.
Correct.
That's right.
You need, we need to budget a minimal amount, this is my opinion, we need to budget a minimal amount to cover things that are vitally important, that will stop a problem that is worsening, and then see what sort of fundraising can be done. I think we need to do the minimum.
Okay. Can I make us just throw some numbers out for consideration?
Please.
Okay, so we do the furnace for 10,400, we do the, the basement dehumidification, we do the well plus the piping. That's $24,900. Now, I think a sense of the board might be, you know, that reviewing this as seeding, what you're, you are progressing on, and that without a meaningful fundraise next year, perhaps we're not going to be so interested in continuing. It's not a mandate, it's not a requirement, we're just giving you a sense of the board. You've got to go out and raise some money.
Right.
Well, Paul, I think you had suggested this, but we, not this, I think, I think we should give this, include this, and not make an assumption that there's going to be fundraising about these expenses, sorry. But I do think, Paul, you had mentioned at one point a match, which we could do with, perhaps with some of the expenditures going forward.
There are, there are so many ways to tackle this. There are lots of other foundations out there. I mean, I can sit with Theresa and happy to, we'll talk about various foundations in the area, and different 990s that I'm in possession of, that could really steer us in the right direction. And Barbara joined me in a trip to the regional hospice not long ago, and we're working in Danbury on a $15 million raise to build a pediatric hospice. There is no pediatric hospice on the East Coast. And just in all that research, just the number of families around here that are interested in historical preservation, and literacy, libraries, all those things, we just need to sit down and have a brain drain. And, you know, Theresa, I think we could help you and Cynthia come up with, you know, a one-pager, a teaser, as we call it in banking, that basically lays out the opportunity, here are naming opportunities, there's whatever. I mean, I was the chair of the capital campaign in New York for the International Center of Photography many years ago, and this was during 9/11 that we had to finish the campaign, it's very difficult. But we kept reselling the rooms that we'd already, you know, like, you know, Elihu Rose paid $4 million for the main gallery, and then he sold it like five times to other people, he didn't care about his name. So Elihu and I, a year and all, each of us, put a name on it. So, have a lot of fun.
I'm going to leave that one alone.
Yeah.
We'll leave that alone. But you know, people, they like to be attached to saying, hey, I did that, you know? You know, we, we put, there were a few of us that put a new roof on the Congregational Church here in Rocksperry, and we did it anonymously, although that didn't last long, but anyway, we were called the Roof Angels. But, you know, we all knew that giving that money to the community and our neighbors, and I tell you, even, especially now, I mean, you're seeing the sentiment growing, given what we're going through, so...
So, Paul, I think that's fantastic.
Yeah.
And I think that should be an ongoing effort. What do you, what do we want to do for this budget year? I keep want to come, keep coming back to that, because I want to, I want to keep Hugh from rolling over in his grave if we run this meeting more than 90 minutes.
Yeah, well, you know what? I think I would like to go to the full figure of 79,000, call it 80,000, and do 50% this year. And, and then work with the organization, the hodge, the minor board, to come up with a very rigorous plan to raise money independently. I think it's a great, you know, to me, that's the appropriate couple of seeding. I don't know, anybody disagree? I mean, I think our budget number is going to come in pretty good this year, and I think we've got the room for it.
I have a point on that. I don't, I think that we're in a completely unusual situation. I think our budget's going to be under a lot of pressure next year.
Okay.
Very concerned about the ability to, what we're going to do with the mill rate, and what kind of reserves we're going to have.
Right.
We have 10 people stay up here with children, we're going to be educating 10 more children. If we have five people, or 10, or 20 people out of work, our collection rate of 98.8 is not going to be achieved.
Very, very good point.
We're going to need a lot of reserves here. And, and we can always parcel them out next year if things get better, or we don't need them. But I think there's a very, and we're limited, you know, what is it, $20,000 that we can move from one place to another? After that, we've got to go to a town meeting.
Right.
Want to be in a position to have five town meetings next year, because...
So would you, would you then want to, should we go then with your earlier numbers, I think it was 24,000 something, to do the most important things?
I would, that's what I would suggest, that's about a third of the, of the need. It gives the, it's not a, it's a meaningful number, but not a, I think, an extraordinary number, and I think it gives you some room for fundraising.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. You make points about the pressure that, you know, it's, I think, it just hasn't dawned on me.
Or any of us. Or any of us.
Yeah.
Right. So is there, does anyone care to make a motion to John's point?
I'll make the motion that we include $25,000 in the budget this year for repairs on the hodge, or the stabilization, and for, for that purpose.
Is that specific enough, Barbara, Kim? Do we need to list the particular line items that we want to cover, or is that...
This is Kim, no particulars, just dollar amount is fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
I second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll call a vote. All those in favor of John's motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Okay.
Very good.
Really glad we had this meeting. Very helpful.
Yep.
Theresa, it's just a beginning, but, you know, get started.
Oh, I'm so excited, and thank you so much. And I think we're, we're actually in a really good position to think about fundraising for the future, and the future use of the hodge, the combination of the library going through the strategic plan process, and the fact that we just, we just did a 10-year plan for the town, which gives us a little bit of insight into what people are looking for. It's a, it's a good combination for us. So, thank you.
Great.
Very good.
When you say go ahead, get started, July 1, you can get started.
No, no, I meant get started fundraising.
Oh, yeah, that you could do now.
That's right.
Yeah.
Theresa, I'll be...
Very good.
I believe that was heard.
I believe that covers the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I think we have the selectments report.
Agenda.
Oh, okay, we've got that yet. Go ahead, Barbara.
All right. So...
Theresa? You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to, we're going to go on to other stuff.
I'm going to go, I've got, I've got salmon in the oven. One name.
Well, enjoy your dinner.
Thank you so much, everybody. All right.
Thank you. Theresa, thanks for your time and commitment.
Thank you, Theresa.
Okay, well, a couple of things, I think, and that's half... Okay, well, a couple of things, I think, and that's have to do with, and Kim, you could chime in anytime you want. But some of it had to do with the bills that came from the library. And Pam Southworth was asking, Andy, you know, I don't even know if the whole board knew about it, just older bill.
I got an email from Pam today.
And it was asking for the Board of Finance to approve those, when in fact, you know, Kim, you could chime in, our purchasing policy, everything, gets signed off by the Selectman's Office. But some of these bills, and that's not what my thing is, but some of these bills are for projects that they did, without even letting anybody know about them, and assuming that everything on the outside of these buildings is going to be paid by the town. So what I, and Andy, you were there when Gary was the chairman, and you went over this thing with the, whatever was on the outside of the building, the town would pay for.
Right.
And, I mean, they've really taken it to heart, but they can't go into a project and then send the bill seven months later for us to pay, because the project needs to be identified upfront, just like what happened tonight. So maybe at some point, because it's not tonight, that the Board of Finance needs to review that policy for the library going forward. I think that that's a good thing.
Well, I think we're pretty clear on the policy. I think that the library wasn't clear on the policy. And so maybe you and Kim and I at some point can trade some emails and come up with a letter that I can present to the Board of Finance for their approval, and just to clarify everything. I like your cat there, Patrick.
I know.
I've been interrupted, my apologies.
My god, his hair grew so fast.
Yeah, he's, it's a winter coat now, so, sorry. I've been sure no way, I just gave up.
But Kim, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, I don't at this point in time. I did, Cynthia had emailed me and asked me for some clarification, and I believe it's at the bottom of the email that Pam sent you. And I sent them a copy of the town purchasing policy and procurement policy, and I thought that maybe they should look to that, to guidance, to establish a policy of whether they adopt ours, or adopt something that is, that works for them. I personally think they should probably follow the town's procurement and purchasing policy on all of this, so that there's never a question, when a bill comes over to be reimbursed, that everybody knows about it, it's already been approved in advance, and we're just doing the last bit of it to reimburse it.
I mean, as an example, we have the charging station, which is behind the library, which was not my favorite place, but the historic district really didn't want it seen, which is crazy, but don't get me started. And so it's back there, and then they were concerned because they thought people were going back there at night and parking, and they wanted a motion light. So Teresa called and said, can we put this light up? And I said, sure, if that's what you, you know, you want to do. And we have the police that go back there, et cetera. But they put the light up, and then they sent us the bill. Now, I didn't say, sure, we'll pay for it. So they have, every, it can't be everything, it was supposed to be major projects on the outside of the building. But they have a maintenance line item, and they need to use it. And so, yes, all I'm saying is I want to bring that up, because I think we need to sit down and just make sure we're all on the same page with that.
Right, and I think it makes sense for there to be a consistent townwide purchasing policy. I don't know why we would do it any other way.
Right.
Yeah. Another thing I would say, this is Kim again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the ones that we, I did say to Pam that we were not going to reimburse them for, are not really of a, none of these are really of a capital nature, dollar-wise. But since the two of them were included in their capital request last year to be reimbursed and paid this year, we were going to honor that. But the other two, just kind of, it's a new item to put up a light, but the air, the stuff with the air conditioner was kind of part of their normal maintenance, and there were some, you know, extensive repairs, but.
Yeah, and that's an interesting question, that particular one, you know, my take on taking care of the outside of the library is taking care of the outside of the library. Just because the air conditioning compressor is outside, it feels like that's part of the HVAC system. I'm questioning whether or not that's what the intent of the Board of Finance was with our policy.
Right. I think it's time to review it and make sure everybody is on the same page. Because like I said, they have, they have maintenance item, but everything that all of a sudden is outside becomes the town's, no. That can't, that can't be allowed. And, you know, then we get a bill almost seven months later, and while this, there was a light on the steps that was supposed to be fixed, and that was listed, and we talked about it. You know, the bill came in and said, I fixed the steps, here's your bill. It's crazy, anyway, it's just getting loose.
I think if we go to a policy, Barbara, where like everyone else, these, the expenditures have to be approved by the first Selectman's Office, then we can decide before the expenditure whether or not it's something we want to do.
Let's see.
That will help us going forward.
But the things are, like, they have a maintenance line item. The things that are under maintenance, that the town is taking are capital in nature. We don't want to get nickel-dimed with their outside items. They have to be capital in nature, which is over five grand. So then we approve these. So, you know, then these bills are coming in that.
I just think there's a lack of understanding, and we just need to sit down and clarify with them.
Right. I will forward to all of you the email I did send to Cynthia and Pam with a couple of purchasing policies, so you can see what kind of went on with this. I will do that.
So, that's good, we can, you can address that. But every day, there's executive orders that come from the governor. It is unbelievable, and to try and get through them all is just horrific. So, but one of them has to do with what municipalities can and can't do, and one of them is involving passing the budget. So in the beginning, when I was listening to this, because we have conferences with the governor twice a week, municipal CEOs, and he said what he was going to do was allow the Board of Selectmen, he was very clear, to be able to approve the budget and set the mill rate, which floored me. But now it has been straightened out, that the Board of Selectmen will authorize the Budget Making Authority to approve the budget and set the mill rate. So at our next Selectman's meeting, what I want to do is formally let the Board of Finance know that you have the authority to approve the budget without town meeting, and then set the mill rate, which is unbelievable. But what I did is I ordered this Zoom thing, so that we, we do have to allow the public the opportunity to comment on the budget. And we can either do this type of thing, and people can call in, and you can have over 250 people, which, what do we get, eight if you're public here? Or they can, we have to provide them with an email address where they can send in their comments. So you still have to have public input, but you cannot hold a town meeting. And that is how we approve the budget. So going forward, I'm just letting you know that. And also, also with the Board of Education, the Board of Education has the authority to pass the Board of Ed budget.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, for us, I have no problem with that, because our budget's going down with the Board of Ed. But if it was going up, I would have a real problem with that. But these are, these are things, how we're going to run, like, we can run this meeting, we have to be recording it. And then you can put your minutes in, but you have to allow the public to listen to it. So, Patrick, I'm sorry I made that comment about your hair growing so fast when your cat.
May I ask you a question? Is this being recorded video and audio, or just video?
Video.
Or just audio?
Audio.
Audio only?
Audio. And so Julie is still going to, you know, do the minutes, and those will come in, and she has seven days to get those in. But we have to show the public, if they want to see this tomorrow, they can, I mean, listen to this tomorrow, they can. And it was on the agenda, which is posted on the website. And so this is information I'm going to let people start hearing. The agendas will have a call-in number, and you can call in and listen to meetings. Like Nanette, if you're going to have your public hearing for ZBA, this is how you would do it, with your team, and then there could be people waiting. But what would happen is that, like, a map or something, we would have to have it scanned and on the website for people to see.
So I talked to you tomorrow about it, because I wasn't sure with what Kim sent around, whether we could do a public hearing. So why don't you and I talk tomorrow?
Absolutely, a lot of changes. But for you, I'm just letting you know that the Board of Selectmen will do that, because we meet the beginning of April. Your public hearing is like April 27, I think. So you have a lot of time to get this budget approved, take it to public hearing, and we can stay on track. And I guess because my point is also that the governor is giving us an extra 90 days, which does a lot for tax bills, everything, it just makes it a real mess. I want to try and stay on our schedule and approve this budget at a town meeting in May, when it was scheduled, if you agree.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I would like to, yeah.
You said, oh, I'm sorry, Andy, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, John, that's fine.
So what is the root of March here? The Board of Selectmen are going to come up with a budget, and they're going to give it to us, and we get to vote on it in a public meeting, and that's it.
Okay, first of all, you do have the budget, but changes are still coming in every day. And Kim will tell you some of the things that we just changed today because of what is going on in the world. You just made changes, so the capital budget is going to change, because we budgeted everything the library asked for. So, but the other thing is, like, things, John, you brought up. Unemployment, sick leave for employees, all of these things. Kim threw in $100,000 in the emergency operations line that we have. Civil preparedness, basically. Civil preparedness. And it's also to wash down inside of a building, disinfect a building, like the town hall and the senior center after all of this is over with. But if any of the employees get sick, it's all different how people are going to be paid. And we have to keep track of every single thing, because we could get reimbursed 75% through FEMA. But we have to have a place to take it. So we're adding that money into the budget, so we can take it, and it'll hopefully come back in revenue from, through FEMA. Correct, Kim?
Right, so we are increasing the civil preparedness budget to $110,000 from, I think we had seven in the budget that you have. And then on the projected revenue side, I am projecting FEMA reimbursement of 75% of that, which is $82,500. And. And so, yeah.
Kim, what are the implications if, because I'm assuming that some of these expenditures might happen in this fiscal year, not the next fiscal year?
That's correct. So we have $23,000 left in contingency. So we're coming up, we have three months left in the year. So we will have to tap that, we will have to start with that. And I'm probably going to ask you if we can please pay, if we have something we have to pay out of contingency related to COVID-19, that we pay it directly out of contingency, just to keep it in one place, just to track it. We have to, it's just easier to track things in one spot for FEMA reporting purposes. So, so that is the only plan that I've got. I did send Barbara a number of reports today about fund balance, estimated fund balance at the end of the year. I did a history of the tax collection rate for the last 20 years. I have a number of things that I can certainly forward to all of you after this is done. So you have enough data to make decisions with. But I am strongly recommending going forward, because we don't know, the FEMA declaration starts January 20, so we have to go back to January and go forward. But there's no end date. Usually, in the past, when I've done FEMA stuff, there's an end date, and there's no end date in sight right now. So like Barbara said, this is changing daily, weekly. I told Barbara that I would keep updating all of this weekly, and I can certainly do that for you as well, so that everybody knows what's happening money-wise, and how we think things are going to go, so.
Kim, has anything come over the transom so far?
Say that again?
Anything come over the transom so far, in terms of money spent with respect to the virus?
No, very, very little, very little.
You know, the town is doing itself, is very lucky. They say that this whole pandemic is going to peak around April 10. We still have two people. We were the lone town for a while. Everything, everybody around us had positive cases, and we were, we didn't have any for a while. Now we do have two, and people are being tested every day, and they're all negative, thank God. People are doing what they're, the majority of the people are doing what we're asking them to do.
That's right. Do we know how these two people are, are they at home or in the hospital?
You know what, they don't want to tell us that, I know one is in the hospital. I don't know what the other one is. But the, what I did with the town, two weeks ago, we closed the doors in order to protect our employees and people coming in, and we're all pretty separated, so that worked out well. We put the telephone numbers on the doors, so people could call whatever department they wanted. And I sent out an email blast, I sent out a phone call, we're here to serve, we are serving. What's worked out really, really well is everybody is working remotely. The second week, I said, we're closing the doors. Now, Kim goes in a day, I was in yesterday. We can go in, you know, try to get through the mail, I do get the mail, Jimmy gets the mail. And so we take turns going in. The only person that is in there the most, I would say, is John Blaney, building. He's all by himself, he gets his mail done, and he goes out and he does inspections on outside of building, because he's trying, he said, I would like to keep contractors working, you know, they're trying to feed their kids. So he does do that, which is great. So we are a functioning town hall, virtual functioning. And it's been very good. So we don't have anyone that's sick, the public works guys are outside. Anybody who is ill, we'd say, you got to stay home, that was the first week. So now, if you are feeling ill, I need to know about it. So we're big on communicating, and it's working out very well.
And how's the food pantry?
Do you know whether, the people, for the people who are sick, do you know whether somebody is now doing contact tracing?
Doing what?
Contact tracing, where they figure out who, who they've been with, and then they test those people.
The Health Department, we are part of the new town health district, and our Health Director, Donna Colbert, they're in charge of all of that, yes.
I have a question for.
Sorry, go ahead.
I have a question for Kim. What's our cash position? How long will we run?
Um, we have, as of today, we can go like, if, if there was no, no revenue coming in, we could, uh, operate for the next, uh, 30 day, uh, 90 days.
Good. You know, one of the considerations here is two, our tax bills, we're going to get paid in July and January, which means these folks have got to come up with the full amount in six months. All of our taxpayers are going to pay the full load in six months and there's just a lot of, I have a lot of concerns about, about the ability of government to function well over the next year.
There's a lot of unknowns, John, like you said, and, um, you know, people that have been laid off and, you know, unemployment just went through the roof. People don't know when they're going to be able to receive money, uh, and, and the hoops that you have to jump through. I mean, I see it every day. It's like, oh, please, I hope everybody stays healthy because it's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of paperwork.
Well, I, I, I will say one thing, last Friday, I did a webinar with the Government Finance Officers Association and it was, uh, to this very thing, trying to, trying to come up with a budget in, in times of uncertainty and how difficult that is. And, uh, and they, they had a city that, uh, that did, that did kind of the, uh, legwork and did the background on all of this. They came up with some spreadsheets, uh, probabilities, statistics, assumptions and all of that. And I thought the very interesting thing that I took away from all of that is over the last 20 years with the 2007 financial crisis, all the nine 11, um, some of the other, um, disease virus outbreaks that we've gone through, that tax collections had stayed very, very, uh, were very stable somewhat throughout that whole time. Um, I will, I will send you, I, I think I can send you a link so that you could listen to that webinar. I think it's available. If anybody's interested, I can do that. But, um, I found it very enlightening, even though the economy was all over the place, that the tax collection states stayed somewhat stable. And I kind of bore that out with, um, with what I had done on the tax collection rates in town over the last 20 years and, and, and how we kind of met all of them. It was, it is, it's kind of astonishing to me. But as you say, John, we're heading into really, really uncharted waters and, uh, because we don't know what the end is going to be, um, for this COVID-19, when? Um, and that is the biggest question, when is it going to end? Um, everybody wants to know and we just don't, no one has a crystal ball, obviously. So, um, so for now, I'm, I'm trying to, it, it's, it's very, very hard to predict what our expenditures are going to be from now till the end of the year. I, I did a fund bound projection. I'm not that comfortable with it, but I did it just the same so that you could see as of today what I think is going to happen. But, you know, things are going to keep changing. This is such a fluid, um, phenomenon we're going through. So, um, but I, but I, but, but to me personally, I think we need to prepare for the worst and we need to budget what we need to budget. Um, and if we don't use it, we don't use it. You know, that, that's the best outcome, that we don't use it. Um, but, but it's hard.
Which is what we are, which is what we are doing.
All the stuff that's thrown at you every day, it, it's, it's hard to come up with, with something to give you. Um, but I will, after the meeting, you'll, you'll get a lot of stuff from me, I can tell you that.
Thank you.
Also wanted to, um, we did get a check from the region for what, 164,000?
Yep, yep.
Uh, we got that yesterday and so that's helpful.
Which is good. So, um, I'll, I will send you a revenue projection. Now, the thing that I will say, that I did say to Barbara in an email, if you decide to keep the mill rate the same, I, I have a revenue projection of it still going down to 15.4. Would be a point four five decrease, given all this stuff going on. Point four five decrease in the tax rate, in the, in the mill rate. It's about 302,000 dollars, that point four five reduction. Um, if you want it, if you decide that you want to keep it the same at 15.85, you're going to have to budget for that excess. You're going to have to either put it in contingency or add it to the, um, uh, COVID-19, to civil preparedness, if that's what you want to do.
If we, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, just looking at your mill rate worksheet on, uh, page, whatever it is of the budget. And if we took, uh, if we took it down to just throw a number out, 15.8 mills.
Yeah. I just, do you have what, what, what they did today, Kim?
Do they have, I don't believe so.
Well, it would take it down, uh, it would, if at, at 15.4, it's 10 million 209 or 10 million 210.
You know what? The one thing, John, if I can interrupt you for just one minute, I did have to change, I'm going to send you, um, I'll send it to you guys right now. The Board of Assessment Appeals has, um, delayed their, uh, hearings. Barbara, am I saying this correctly?
Yeah, they have 90 days because they really can't be going in people's homes.
Right.
Day delay to go and, uh, look at these appeals.
So we have to go with the, uh, full grand list, not a net, uh, of any appeals. Uh, so I did have to change that. So all of these, um, the.
But you're still talking, what, 24 grand is what it would come out, tax dollars with all the assessments? If they, if they gave everybody everything they want, wasn't it like 24,000?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not here with the number was. I was assuming it was like a hundred thousand dollars and I had built into that. But let me, uh, let me just send this to you right now.
Well, like, you know, perhaps we don't need to do that right now, but just, just broad speaking, big numbers.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If we, if we go from 15.4 to 15, uh, to 15.8 is mill rate, we pick up 265,000 dollars on the numbers I'm looking at now.
Yep.
And I'd put that in, in contingency.
I would too. I don't, we, we don't lose anything by keeping it the same.
Yep.
I mean, I think people would applaud that. And I agree. I mean, we don't know what's coming. I'd rather have money in contingency.
You do, you have plenty of good reasons to do that. I, I totally agree with that. Um, you always, you always kind of have to look at it, running the risk of overtaxing people in a, in an environment like this. But, but you, but, but you can make your justifications why you're doing it and, and they're very valid and, and I don't.
I think so.
Well, and we always have the option to next, if, if we don't spend it, we have the option next year to reduce the mill rate.
Right.
Absolutely, I agree, I agree.
Okay.
You could, you could, that, that, um, that, you know, it, it's always all about the school. So, you know, hopefully the school numbers will come in lower and we'll have another reduction next year. It just depends on that, really.
Well, if we, if we don't, it, it'll be better to work from, and if, if what John is saying is, uh, turns out to be true, it's going to be better to work from the existing mill rate than a lower mill rate because then the likelihood that we won't have to increase it again goes up if we do it.
I agree. The optics would be pretty bad.
Yeah.
It would be nice to lower it a little, not to 15.4, but there's people struggling in this community.
15.8 is, is, is a reduction of about 50,000 dollars.
Even if not, I think it's just a, a, sending a, a sign, a signal, you know, with your pain kind of thing, because there are people. So, you know, what are you going to do if your, your tax collection rate drops significantly?
Well, that's why you're at, at 15.8 because given the demographics of the town, there's a lot, you know, we're, we're a barbell, right? Just like the rest of the economy and the rest of this country. There are people here that can afford to, uh, to handle that without much of a, a problem and other people that it's going to be a burden for. So I know the, I'm pretty sure the people that can handle it are going to continue to handle it.
Yeah.
So I want, if it goes down, I want them to meet, the folks that are meeting their obligations and that's probably 60% of our taxpayers, so more.
And, and there is some talk about some possible tax relief coming from the state in some way, shape or form. So, but that, but that is still, um, not, that hasn't been really totally discussed yet, but it's.
That's tax relief for small businesses and in the first day, it, it was topped out, you know, you, and so many, many, many businesses are not going to benefit unless they raise the amount of money that they're going to put into that. So.
Well, the other.
I'm afraid I need to, I need to hop, I apologize.
So Andy, before we, before we lose him, do you want to, can we set a next meeting?
Um, well, I was thinking about that. Uh, our next scheduled meeting is the 21st, is that correct?
It doesn't give you a lot of time before the.
No.
Yeah, I guess.
No, um, so we can meet.
27th.
7th, 14th, uh, do you want to meet the 7th? And that way that gives us more flexibility if we need yet another special meeting, we have the 14th. Uh, does that work for everyone?
The 7th is fine.
The select meet on the 7th.
Okay.
If you want to do.
We could move it.
The 14th is open.
14th.
Oh, you know, we can do a Thursday night too, you know, uh, Wednesday or Thursday night.
April 9?
April 9th is fine.
Because as you said, if we need another interim meeting, we'll have another week.
Yes, exactly. That's, that's what I was thinking. Um, so do we want to set a meeting for the 9th?
Let's do it.
Done. Okay, um, I'll have, uh, I'll get Julie to send out an agenda. And it, that will just be, you know, again, a general budget discussion. I don't know that we need to be more specific than that on the agenda, but if anyone has other thoughts, please feel free to say so now or email me later.
Okay.
Can you send us the updated numbers before then?
Yes. Oh, definitely. I will, I'll to you tomorrow.
Okay.
She'll change the, uh, library.
Capital plan and I will put a 15.8, uh, assumption in here and change all the basic Is that what, is that, does that sound good?
Sounds good.
It does.
Perfect. All right, what else have we got? Barbara, do you have more?
No. Nope.
Um, anyone, we, again, this is a special meeting, so we are limited strictly to agenda items. Uh, anybody have anything else, uh, relating to the agenda?
No.
I hope you all stay well.
You too.
Thank you, you too.
Everyone, please stay.
You too. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Wait a minute, motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye. What do you like this way of doing it?
Yeah, very much.
Very nice job, well.
And Nanette, I'll call you tomorrow about the public hearing.
Good meeting, everybody, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. I don't know how to get out of this.
There's a leave meeting on the right-hand side at the bottom.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Bye. Bye. Okay, let's see, I'm going to stop recording.